A few, just one question for Mr. Holm. I noticed that, like, the truck ULV routes, a lot of spraying all over the city, which I like to see, twice they depict that. And then the other, the ULV harborage route, what is different about the harborage versus the truck ULV route that makes the harborage much more condensed towards the center of the city?
The harborage route, as they've named it, is specifically targeted to those areas that were along the creek and adjacent to the forest reserves where the highest counts were in the traps. Again, trying to use the actual science to dictate our spraying as opposed to just going out there and driving and spraying. So those routes were an abbreviated route to get the most effect for the dollar, if you will.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions, Alderman Coles?
I thought there was supposed to be three sprains a year.
We got away-
I thought when we signed the contract for three years, we said three sprains a year, and we only had two. According to what I talked to when I talked to Clark down at the convention, there was only two that they said that they wanted to do three, and somebody said, "No, don't do the third one."
We got away from, well, first of all, that's not true, but we got away from just a generic number. I think when I started here, everyone was proud to say, "We have six sprains a year." And, you know, we send the truck out, and we see them spray and go down the street. But it really wasn't being done with any science behind it and based on the trap counts. Then we went, if you recall, with Vector or DAPCO, and they kind of introduced a new concept of utilizing trap counts, trying to control the mosquitoes before they became adults, targeted sprains to have the most effect, and, you know, we really had good luck that summer by taking a more scientific, a more intelligent approach as opposed to just, "Let's watch the trucks drive down the street with the mist coming out the back of them." So we did get away, and the contract does not specify a specific number of sprains.
All right.
The contract specifies that spraying shall be done when the trap counts dictate, and that's a decision to be made between the contractor and the city together.
I don't know enough about it to debate the science part of it, but having lived here for over 30 years, I could say this was by far the worst summer for mosquitoes in the last 10 to 20, at least, you know, near where I live. So, and that may just be simply a product of the weather conditions we were having this summer, but I do feel it's worth saying, so.
Yeah, and it wasn't a function of Wooddale's program, or Elmer's program, or Itasca's program, it was a function of the weather and Northern Illinois. I think Northern Illinois this year experienced historic levels of mosquitoes. So, I mean, there was nothing that Company A or Company B could have done to control Mother Nature this year.
Item for information only, item number 11, items for future meetings, A, street sufficiency study results, 20-year capital roadway plan, B, city services strategic plan, item C, ordinance revisions, private improvements within public ROW, item D, Parkway tree ordinance, item E, storm sewers detention ordinance revision, item F, school street pond project, item G, annexations phase two, item H, MFT audit results. Are there any other items to add? Alderman Police.
So we can add that Ethan Woods to this, the cleanup?
Mr. Manager, do you wish to give a brief update and then indicate whether we need to add it or not?
I don't believe we need to add it. We have pulled the letter of credit, and they are proceeding. We have inspected this week, and they should be on schedule. If they're not on schedule, I can get the money to finish the project, we can get the money to finish the project within 24 to 48 hours. I've already talked to the bank, so we've already pulled the letter of credit, and they are proceeding as planned, and we're going out there. I was out there myself, John Forrest was out there, and we're monitoring them.
Alderman Police.
One other question, on the street sufficiency study, I thought that was coming up, do we know when that's coming up?
That item is to come to you in December. That was to come to you, I mean, I promised to do it in the fall, which we didn't make the fall because we pushed it back and back and back because of our other projects, but it's coming to you in December, so it'll be here prior to the upcoming budget, which is, of course, really when it's most important, so.
All right.
Alderman Wesley.
Gary, could you give me update on the sidewalks on Cedar?
Pre-construction meeting is scheduled for tomorrow with the contractor, and he has until, I don't remember what the date was, December 5th or December 10th, to complete the sidewalks on Cedar for this year. That's still our intention, is to get sidewalk in prior to onset of winter.
But the grass will all be dug up, and it won't be replaced, they'll come spring then, right?
Right, we'll make the site safe for the winter time, and then restoration will occur in the spring.
My question, my, just one other question on that. If we go ahead and go forward with the project now, I know the sidewalks have got to December 5th, but what happens with the driveways that get yanked, the asphalt driveways, and they can't lay, I guarantee you, they ain't gonna lay asphalt in December.
No, probably what we'll end up doing is the same, like a cold patch type material that we, it's the same type of material that we use on the roads in the winter time, and then those would be temporarily patched with that during the winter months, and in the spring, you're right, they'd have to be torn, you know, torn out and then put in with final asphalt material. You're talking such, you're talking very small areas.
Okay, but also, all right, so you are-
But yes, the driveways would be-
But you will send a letter to those people saying that their driveway will be redone?
Yeah, we won't have anyone out during the winter time, so.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry.
Alderman Lewitin.
One of the citizens on Cedar asked me if they're going to have the gullies filled up after the sidewalks come in.
They gone?
And the answer to that question is no, we're not doing any significant drainage improvements as part of the sidewalk project. Sidewalk project is basically being installed at grade, you know, with the exception of a few places, but essentially at grade.
This was the citizen at the corner of Commercial. If you could get back to that couple, that elderly couple, and give them the information.
Which corner do you know?
South, southeast.
Southeast corner, okay.
But if I am mistaken, that gully is not on Cedar, that gully is on Central, because I don't think there's ditches on Cedar.
No, they're on Commercial.
Right, so Commercial won't be, Commercial won't-
Oh, you've got to cross-
We'll have to cross over this well with the-
Yeah, but that's, yeah, that won't be filled in, because if you fill that in, you're going to scrub Central.
Again, I'm asking this as a citizen's inquiry, and if you would get back to her. And I thought about it when Alderman Wesley brought up the subject, and it was something I was going to get ahold of you tomorrow on, and I just thought, well, I'll bring it up now because it matches.
Again, that's the southeast corner of Commercial and Cedar. Okay.
Do you know who I'm talking about, the elderly couple that live there?
Mr. Lewitin, I'm going to ask that after the meeting then, if you can fill in the details with Mr. Holm, if there's any, anything else needed.
I'll talk to you afterwards to get their names.
Okay. Any other items for future meetings? I make a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
And the question, all in favor? Opposed, motion carries.
I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Economic, the Community and Economic Development Committee. I'd like to note that seven of the eight of us are here, except for Alderman Shaki. Can I have an approval of the minutes of October 25th?
Motion to approve.
All the ayes?
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, that's, the minutes are approved. We have two things that are coming up, and that's the train station and the International Council of Shopping Centers. I'm going to ask Mr. Murmas if he would accept an invitation to come to this at the next meeting, and we can strike it from this, this week's agenda, as it's rather late, and I'd like to give you ample time to speak.
Are we doing the train station tonight and then striking the ICSC report?
Striking the ICSC.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Okay. So number five is stricken. So that leaves us with only one item, and that is the train station. Now, we'll begin that by bringing to public light the fact that there was a special train station subcommittee of Aldermen's, Alderman, Kedala, and Winger, and they gave back a report. Everybody's had a chance to read the report, but I'll read the most, the conclusion, "The committee believes, the subcommittee believes that the most plausible scenario for the new train station is to take a combination of the KSNA original architectural plans and merge them to include a building with some additional height. This would allow the city to utilize plans that truly have been pre-approved for Wooddale's site and not only shorten the approval process, but save money on not starting from square one with a whole new set of plans." The KSNA original architectural plan had the concept of building what could be built now and in the future, and I'm pointing to this map, of putting up a elevated building in a possible second phase, or, you know, with high hopes that there would be. So we have the approval for the main building already. Now, the committee came back and they proposed moving that over to the center to bring the height into what is the main structure, and that's the compromise that they've come up with. I believe it would be more appropriate for the subcommittee to take over the meeting at this time. Alderman Kedala and Winger, are you, are you willing to do that?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Staff right now is putting some renderings up on the, on the overhead. Just to summarize, I think the consensus, the majority consensus was that the KSNA plan, which we see at the top, was just, was too unremarkable to spend any money on. The pre-approved, already constructed projects that our manager was, was able to secure for us, upon reviewing them, the way they are neither aesthetically nor even physically fit the site properly, so they would need such modifications as to essentially constitute a, an all-new design to begin with. The, the plan in the middle was actually my first attempt at, you know, just giving a rendering, an idea of, of, you know, as a designer, what I was kind of hoping to see out of this, as small of a footprint as possible to save money, but with some vertical element and a very classic Prairie-style design. The, the committee, after ruling out, you know, the other options, said, "Yeah, that looks good," but one of the good things about the KSNA plan was that it used the foundation of the existing building, and we also have a pretty good idea of what it should cost, because it was bid multiple times. So the idea was to, to morph some of the design elements from that middle plan onto the KSNA building, which already has been approved by Metro, and, and basically, you know, morph them into one building. Now, if you look at the, the top KSNA plan, I don't know if you guys can get that anymore into full view, the, the bottom plan is only eight feet longer, so it's, it's not all that significant, eh, we kind of unfortunately, we want to, maybe you can even fold it in half. We want to see, yeah, we want to see the, the top one and the bottom one next to each other. Basically, the floor plan, the plumbing, the mechanical systems, very much of what we've already paid an architect to design is there. We changed some of the, some of the facade elements, but a lot of the mechanical systems can stay. We make the building eight feet wider, and we put that tower on. Those covered exterior waiting areas are still the same size, although the roof has been modified somewhat to, to value engineer it, cheaper to build, and, and also more classic Prairie style. This proposal, I would also, you know, along the lines of value engineering, would make the recommendation that we, that we no longer consider the open web truss design of the, of the roof structure, although that looks nice from inside, I'm not sure that that cost is, is quite worth that visual impact. My personal feeling is that it's, it's much more important that, that this building make a statement from, from passersby than, than to spend a lot of money on interior finishes, particularly since you put something fairly nice in there in the beginning, and then eventually, as those wear and have to be replaced, as budget allows, you can do something nicer. But the structure of the building itself is, is what's critical. Also, that's the reason that, that the subcommittee said, "You know what, let's, let's perhaps not consider future phases two and three, as councils change, they may never get built, and we may end up stuck with the unremarkable, single-story ranch-style building that doesn't look considerably different than what we have now." So, so that's, that's the idea, and I think all we're looking for tonight is, I believe, and, and anybody on the board, perhaps the mayor can correct me if I'm wrong, is, is a general consensus, does, does how we got to this point make sense, and does that rendering as at least a starting point of what this might look like, you know, is that aesthetically pleasing to a majority of us up here? I think. I guess I'll call, yeah, Alderman Wesley.
I believe Mr. Knite was up for me.
What's the material you're using here?
The facade material, it's all brick, it's masonry, it's, it's full masonry construction, the only framing would be in the roof.
Go ahead, Mr. Wesley. We have any idea what the price tag's going to be?
I will reluctantly disclose what I believe that number to be, as it is based entirely off of extremely rough budget numbers. There's no structure accounted for yet, there's no architectural plans really to accom, to accompany this, the scheme. But considering the KSNA plan, which was, which was bid multiple times over, came in above the $600,000 range, and that was in the spring, the fact that this, now we've missed the opportunity to build this season, the possibility of construction, labor, and material increase over the next, you know, in a 12-month period from the last time it was bid, is, is likely to be in the neighborhood of 5%, considering the fact that, that plan does not enlarge the footprint of the building by much, so we don't have a lot of additional foundation work, and it still does reuse the entire foundation, just adds to it of the existing building. And considering, I think I've done some things to value engineer places where we don't need the nice details, in other places I've added costs like, once again, we're going for Prairie style, so those, those strips of ribbon windows with, with the Prairie-style mottens, quite possibly more expensive than what the architect had planned to begin with. Brick is brick, I don't think that the way I've got it laid out is necessarily any more or less expensive than what the architect had. I took away that brick checkerboard, so there's maybe some money to save there, but I've added some limestone. Bottom line is, you take that 620,000, whatever that was, add 5%, plus add the, the different elements that I've put in here, I believe this to be able to come in under a million, but how far and, and how accurately, at this point, I can't say. Yeah, follow-up, Alderman Wesley.
Yes, I have one follow-up. In our packet, we received a breakdown on where the money would come from. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Lewitin, IMF match fund, according to what I understand, that is to be used for platform lighting, and that's what we had to do, not for the train station. Am I wrong, or am, am I right?
We have to, we have to spend the money. We can spend it the way we want to spend it, but it, at the time, when we decided to go ahead with the platform lighting, we weren't doing anything with the train station. We can check to see if we can still use that. If we move on this project and we spend it, that, the, the important thing is that we commit to a project and we spend it. And since we were in a holding pattern with the train station, and we had to spend it, and we went through the list of what we could spend it on, that would seem to be what we should spend it on. Now, since that time, we got some preliminary estimates, and it appears that the platform lighting is going to be more expensive than we had originally estimated, so we could only do a couple of lights anyway. So we could still possibly use this if we get authorization to go ahead again and go out to bid it. And Mr. Holm, maybe can explain a little bit more about that.
Just for an update on the platform lighting, we did send out proposals to, I believe it was 15 different vendors in the Chicagoland area who are lighting vendors. Most of them really responded back by saying they, they weren't interested in, in working on the Metro aspects of it. Our maintenance contractor, Alderman Nelson, did submit a proposal today to design, build, basically, the whole system, but that proposal was in excess of $240,000 for platform lighting, so. They identified areas right off the bat where they could cut costs by not using, like, the similar fixtures to what we have out here, using different fixtures, so I don't know that $240,000 is in concrete, but it's certainly more than the amount of money we, we had.
But I thought we had used it, I have a T match fund, I thought it was for the safety, that it was all listed as safety stuff. So my, my question is, I'm concerned about using that money, because how do you consider a new train station a safety with a, a fund? I, I just don't-
If you recall, the specifications, and I can again give you a copy, the specifications were that it had be, had to be something for the entire public benefit. They would consider the train station, that's how we were going to use it, as a public benefit, and then, since we weren't going to do the train station, the lights for the train station would still be a public benefit.
Okay, it's getting late, and I guess I don't remember the conversation. Again, you're looking at the proposal of taking $350,000 out of the capital project. Are we looking to go out for, are you looking for directions to go out to an architect to redesign this, or give them some ballpark figure? I'll rest my case there, and then I'm sure Mr. Knite has a question.
Let, let me just answer it, and then we'll go to Mr., to Alderman Knite. I guess I'm not sure what we're looking to do right now. I mean, this committee just met two nights ago, so I kind of, I kind of took the recommendation just to, just to bring it here and, and see if aesthetically this is, this is right, and if we have hopefully kind of gone in the right direction and make something happen. So personally, e- even if it's not direction tonight, although I'd like it to be tonight, ultimately, yeah, I think I'm, as far as I am, maybe I shouldn't speak for the entire committee, but I think we are, we are looking for direction on, on how to proceed, whatever that next step may be. Alderman Winger, anything to add?
And, and just to ensure that there is consensus of a majority of the city council members that you would support this, and that, and, and the price tag that would go along with it, that, that we, that we have the intent to invest in this manner.
At this point, getting sketches like this done isn't costing the city anything, so this, if something is wrong with that, this is the time to deal with it, rather than after we may have potentially paid another architect to draw. Alderman Knite, sorry.
Yeah, I like the alternative two, I like the extension for the outside covering. It's a nice design, I think it would be going along with the theme that we've started in the city with the Prairie-type style. Let's, let's get some estimates on what this would cost to build as, kind of designed as is.
Thank you, Alderman Knite, I appreciate that. Mayor Johnson?
Just to answer your question, I think the only thing you're being asked to do tonight would be concept approval. Do you like this style? Do you like this design? Do you like this footprint? Thereafter, staff can go forward with CMAC grants, thereafter, staff can go and hire an architect to complete it, thereafter, we can get bid estimates, whatever. But I think the point is tonight, do you like this design better? Do you like this concept enough that we should go forward?
Before I call Alderman Police, Mr. Manager, did you have a response to the mayor's comments? I thought I may have seen you start to put your hand up.
I, I would just say that the sooner we get some direction on, on what we're going to do, if we're going to go forward, the, the idea is that we're going to use the existing plans, and all's we're doing is we're adding, we're enhancing the existing plans. So if we could get authorization to at least go to bid for a, a new plan that would be based on this concept, then we could go forward, put it out to bid, and then we would come back with you, and we would show you what we could get, and we could move forward. The idea is if we, if we use this to apply for a grant, we have to have it ready and, you know, as soon as possible, and it's going to be really tight. So if we had authorization at next week to go ahead, you know, first directed by this, the committee, and then from the council, we would go ahead and try to put together a request for proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Alderman Police.
I just want to say, alternate two is the one I like the best.
It, it seems to make a lot of sense, and I think it does look pretty good, actually. Alderman Coles.
Alternate two. That's the best one that I looked at.
Thank you. It's Alderman Wesley.
My question to you, we don't have to go out and bid for this, for professional services, right?
Well, we have to go for request for proposals for architectural services to incorporate that into the design.
What did?
It's, it's a-
Yeah, technically, it's a request for qualifications, so you go out and you solicit qualifications from professionals, and then you negotiate a fee after you've selected a professional.
Alderman Wesley, follow-up.
Could we, since this company already did part of it, can't we just ask them to add it, take this plan, have, add that in? I mean-
If that was the direction, then it would be simply a change of scope to an existing contractor.
I mean, it's going to be a lot quicker if we have to get the grant in. I admit this company screwed up at, at the beginning, no doubt about it, but here, we, there we got the plans. All we want to do is tell them, "Go ahead and put this tower in." No one says they have to be the contractor, or we have to obey by that contract saying that they have to build it. But can we not? I'm just drawing this out, because you're, you're right, you are getting pretty close to deadline to get a possible grant. I mean, you are really pushing that deadline here. And if I, if, if I don't, instead of going, I mean, why can't we just, Mayor, could we just authorize it, go ahead tonight and do it, and not let go council for vote? Can't we do a vote here?
No, you cannot take final action in the committee, but I think if it's unanimous that you like this concept, and that you want the architect to modify his drawings to this concept, staff can start working on that, and maybe we can have some hard figures by next Thursday of what the increased contract cost would be with them, with the architectural firm.
Before I call Alderman Police, the only thing I would, I would say to Alderman Wesley is, since we do have to wait another week for final action, there is quite possibly enough time to at least potentially involve another architect. I don't want to delay this, I want to do whatever we can to, to speed it along, and if the consensus is to go with that architect, I'm okay with that, because I think we're giving them a lot of information to work with. But if it, if there's a possibility of not taking additional time to bring in at least another potential architect, because this isn't going to come for free either way, if it doesn't delay.
But it's got a, the problem is, they just said that it has to go out for, oh, help me out again here, guys. Yeah, so that's, that's going to take a, a week to get out, a lease, time they put it together and get it out to these people, and then send it back. I mean, you're looking at two weeks, you're talking almost next committee meeting, till we get a price.
I'm okay with it, I'm just-
I mean, you know, I don't care, whatever you guys decide.
Alderman Police, and then Alderman Winger.
I have no problem with the original architect just adding, making this change to the elevation, as long as he's not the one controlling the bid.
I'm in agreement there.
Don't let him control the bid, just let him change the eleva, he's already done all the work, basically all he's going to do is change the elevation and maybe the, the roof truss or whatever. And, and don't let him handle any of the bidding, we'll take care of it ourselves.
You gentlemen at that end are making sense. Alderman Winger.
What grants are we speaking of? I know there's the notion that there'd be a grant out there for maybe 10 years down the road, but are there some immediate grants that we know of that could come through?
We, we originally discussed CMAC grants, and I did give you a listing of some of the funding over the last three to four years. It doesn't, it doesn't look like that there, there would be funds available, we won't know that, we don't know how much is going to be allocated, and if we, you know, we put, we, we get a conceptual plan, at least enough to submit the grant, we can, we can also do it that way, and see if the funds are available. There's STP funds, there, there's possible other funding as well, we'll, we'll research that completely, but, you know, we can't, we can't know for sure.
I think Alderman Lewitin was next.
Alderman John Kedala, I want to say that I think that, that I also think that the alternate two is the more- that the alternate two is the more visually appealing one. And my reason for that is there's more glass, uh, and the lighting inside can be seen by trains coming in, and by people from Irving Park Road, so that draws more attention to the building, and also for security for people that are inside or nearby, because police driving by can have a better view of activity that's going on. I would like to say, secondly, that I, I like the idea that Alderman Wesley has proposed, that we just get it done with K-S and, what, K-S and C? I get my alphabet mixed up.
A.
K-S and A. And I really like that you have donated two weeks of your time to work as hard as you have worked to, to get this done. And then, to the mayor, procedurally, does the subcommittee call for the motion, or does the, the main committee call for the motion?
No, there should be a recommendation of your committee to council.
My committee, not the subcommittee makes it.
Correct.
Okay.
You have the recommendation, I believe, of the subcommittee, but you would act on it as full committee.
Okay. Uh, then I would make the recommendation that we tell staff to go ahead with alternative two, or alternate two, and to work with K-S and A to get this ready, with the objective of acquiring C-MAC funds. You wanna, uh, fix that up if I added too much?
Uh, are you recognizing me?
Yes, I recognize you to answer the question.
I wouldn't specifically say C-MAC funds. C-MAC is one of four possible sources for us. There's C-MAC, there's SDP. Senator Pankow is doing a member initiative for us, she's trying to get 200,000 for capital projects. And there's also metro funding. If the state ever does the metro funding, there will be capital projects in that bill. Uh, but I would like to point out, after listening to Maggie Powers, that I had forgotten about the Economic Development Fund of 800,000 dollars. Uh, just for those of you that are new on the council, uh, we figure on a yearly basis we need 450,000 to run the building department, and one year, we had building permit fees of 1.2 million dollars. Uh, anyway, we had a surplus of 850,000, which we set aside for some project tied to economic development, such as a new train station in the middle of our central business district, which would be a non-recurring expense, that we would use the money one time for a capital project. Uh, and so, technically, we have the money in-house without rating any other funds to build the train station in full ourselves.
I'm really salivating over what you're saying, so...
[laughing]
So then, I amend the motion to, to approve alternate two, um, and give direction to staff to begin, uh, working with K-S and A, and to search for any free money from any governmental agency that's out there. I'll recognize you.
Thank you. Um, staff will work to, with K-S and A, to negotiate a scope change to their contract, basically is how it'll work. Um, one of the first questions they're gonna ask, and I don't know that I've heard a, a concrete number, is budget. You know, what, what's that concrete number we wanna give to our consultant?
10,000.
Or are we gonna go, yeah, or are we gonna go to them with the question?
No, not the consultant.
Give them any number.
Okay, so don't, don't give them the number, let them, let them propose a number.
No!
Okay. That's fine. Give them a plan, and you, they create the number.
Like, one question.
Alderman...
Do we know what we wanna change the inside to? I mean, they had the wood truss, right? Is it, what are we looking to do in, in there? I mean, he's gonna have to change that.
Alderman Cadala will have the answer to that.
I can spend the weekend putting together a scope, um, of, of the changes interior that I am proposing from what they had, as well as work out the details of the floor plate, the floor plan of that tower, 'cause it's not obviously evident in an elevation. So by Monday morning, I'll be in your office with everything that you're gonna need to hand them for them to start...
Monday's Veterans Day, right?
You're not gonna be there?
Tuesday morning. Tuesday morning.
I'll be waiting at your office Monday morning until Tuesday morning. Good, an extra day. Okay, you'll, Tuesday morning, you'll have, you'll have a revised scope, you'll have, you'll have some details worked out, you'll have some, uh, material specifications, as well as the missing pieces to be able to draw this thing up.
Do you think there's a price tag on this?
No.
No.
That's what I asked.
The architect, not go for this.
Well, you're the one that wanted to go with one architect.
I understand it, but...
I'm kidding.
Are we going, give them a, a direction on how much, are they going to, or is part of... I mean...
Are they gonna charge?
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's what, staff will then come back to you for, for approval.
Got it.
Yes.
We now have the proposal on there, we have a second, so...
I got one camera.
I'm sorry. Uh, Alderman Nuncio?
Sorry, but when we met with, uh, when I believe one of the owners of K-S, K-S and A, they said they were willing to work with us and make some moderate changes to elevation without really any added expense, so we should remind them of that comment they made.
And may I remind everybody that everything we say will be on web TV, so if they're smart, they'll watch it. So, how many, Secretary, could you please ask for a voice vote, each person?
What's the motion on the floor? I'm sorry. Alternate two.
The motion is that we approve alternate two, and we direct staff to go back to K-S and A, and work with them for the modifications, and that we direct them to search for among the four or more proposals for free money that we can get. The mayor listed four: C-MAC, SDP, uh, the governor, if he approves, uh, what, what Sec, uh, Senate, um, uh, Pankow can get, and, and what was the fourth one, Mayor?
Uh, the metro budget itself.
The metro budget itself. So they're to seek among the four possibilities, and anything else that they can think of or comes along during the time that they're working on it. And those are the three things wrapped into one.
Yes.
Alderman Police?
Yes.
Alderman Lewitan?
Yes.
Alderman Cadella?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Knite?
I wanna thank you for your votes. I think we're, we've gone from disagreement to unanimity. Um, next item is items for future meeting, Georgetown TIF. Um, Mr. Manager, do you wanna say anything about that?
Not at this point, no, we're not ready to bring any information forward.
Okay. Item seven is adjournment, do I have a motion? I'm sorry. Alderman Winger, I'd like to recognize you at 11:35 PM, yes.
Did Mr. Clicker and Mr. Murma stay purposely for the, uh, shopping center thing? And if so, I mean, how long do you think that would take? I mean, because they, they've stayed through the whole thing, just, just go through this last item.
I hope so.
Okay, what, what about Mr. Clicker?
How long?
Oh, okay, let's do the five minute then, I mean...
Is it only five minutes? I understood that you had a lot to say.
We can cut it.
Okay.
We can make it.
Which of you gentlemen would like to give the presentation?
Uh, I don't know.
Please, take the floor.
A couple of weeks back, myself and Mr. Clicker attended the ICSC Deal Making Conference in Chicago. There are 70,000 members in this association in the U.S., Canada, and more than 80 other countries. Um, it includes shopping center owners, developers, managers, marketing specialists, investors, lenders, retailers, other professionals, academics, and public officials. While attending the conference, we focused on two specific, uh, goals. Uh, one of the goals, uh, for myself was to go around and talk to other municipalities that attend these conferences on a regular basis. Mr. Clicker's goal was to talk to retail developers and, you know, retail businesses. As part of my objective, I included in your packet some things that Woodridge, Elmhurst, and Elgin, and not Elmhurst, Woodridge, Bartlett, and Elgin are doing to market their community. And I know in the past, we would talk a lot before about marketing, you know, what city-owned property is out there, and what can we do with it. But a good initiative to take, which, with, which these communities are doing, is they market the whole community. They market things that the city doesn't even own, they put it in a DVD, they put it in a folder, they, you know, they have their GIS maps with every single, I mean, you've seen it, if you've looked at the packet, it's, the information's all in there. And as far as working with the developers, Ross can cover that.
Again, uh, my focus at the conference was to walk around and talk to developers and to individual, uh, potential tenants for not only city-owned properties, but for the other spaces within Wooddale. Uh, at this show, there were, there were several developers, um, and retailers there. There were probably, uh, five retailers that were appropriate for the existing spaces available in Wooddale. I did talk to several of them about the possibilities of the projects that are happening, one being the train station. That was a very big step tonight. A lot of people said that a, a, a focus point in the community is very important to them when they, when they make a decision to come into a community. But, uh, other users were very interested when they heard of the projects, potential, or the projects that will be constructed, such as at Wooddale and Devon, and the, the Wooddale Station that is also currently under construction. Uh, I did pass on several leads to those companies. I did follow-ups with them today to see how those leads were, were panning out. Uh, and, uh, it does seem that, uh, at least one of the leads will most likely result in a leasable space to Gulo International at their Wooddale and Devon building, uh, and that they are very hopeful that that will be a finalized lease very soon, actually. It's a, the retailer and, and really likes the area. Didn't know what was going on out there because of our presence at the ICSC show in Chicago. They, they really took an interest to the property. I put them in touch with Gulo, Gulo contacted them, and it looks like it, it will result in a, in a very good, strong lease for that building. Um, the main reason, and the other thing that all the developers told me as I was talking to them was, yes, Wooddale has a lot of potential. We wanna, basically, they want to be in Wooddale. However, they need to know what the playing field is. And part of that is, how do we market our community? What type of development decisions have we made for the community? And, uh, things along that nature. We're working on all those issues, and we need to continue to learn what the developers need and want to come into Wooddale. And that's really where our proposal is going, is that we need to continue to learn and expand on what we have already learned at the Illinois show by going to the national show. Uh, the national show is over 50,000 in attendance. It's a convention space of over 2 million square feet, where there were five appropriate retailers at the Illinois show for us to talk to for our current developments. My guess would be that there will probably be at least 150 to 200 appropriate retailers to talk to at the national show. Um, again, if the, the contacts that we've made have, will, have already turned into one successful lease, then the, the national show should hopefully also allow us to have at least that success.
If there's any questions on participation or Chicago show, or...
Where's the national meeting going to be held?
It's in Las Vegas, Nevada.
When it will, when will it be held?
In May, every year.
May.
Annual basis. And it's, it's an item that's, uh, we do have money in the budget for, for conferences and...
Who are you recommending go? One of the two of you, or both of you?
Most likely both, and an Alderman, if, if an Alderman would like to go.
Is that a bribe?
Not really.
Okay. Uh, we'll hold that over for a future discussion, since it's a, oh, oh, no?
We have the cost, actually, in a breakdown right here, if you'd like to go.
Alderman Wesley, what is, uh, would you...
They got hands up for us.
Well, you spoke already, so go ahead.
First of all, how long has this organization been in effect?
ICSC has been in existence for at least 10 years, from my knowledge. We've been members for over a year now. Um, we're...
So this is the first one you went through, this conference?
No, I had, I had attended, uh, I've attended several ICSC functions, um, business luncheons, uh, other inter, uh, learning conferences, things along that nature. We have brought forth some of the things that we've learned into that, we've incorporated into the proposed zoning for the downtown. Uh, you, the, they have been very successful, very important conferences that we've attended. We've learned a lot, we've been able to apply it a lot to what our economic development plans are for the community.
Well, first of all, my opinion, before I would authorize or vote for going to Vegas in the, in the national, you need to show us, as a council member, on what you guys have put together so far, because we have been talking about economic development in this committee, and all of a sudden, this conference, and, and out there, one thing, me and Mr. John Cadala sat in a meeting down there at the, the conference, and everyone kept saying, I, you, you guys have big boxes, you said rooftops. Well, you know what? Going to that conference, we sat through, rooftops, they ain't, they don't go by that, okay? They go by what's, with their preferred cards from these companies, and we got access to that. Any developer that is a member of this, has access to that data to be used to see if it's worth coming into. My point here, and, and this is only my opinion, to send you to a national conference, you have not shown me, as Alderman, on what you are planning to propose down in, down there, and put something together. You know, you brought that back, these infalls, beautiful, really nice, okay? But show me something before I approve a conference to Vegas. You know, yeah, we got one different, yeah, first time, but that's the first one, with all the retail space that's been available, that's the first one that's coming to us. Have we not worked the floor, have we not called any other developers around to try work and bring some? You, you ain't bringing it back to us on what you have, you, you haven't brought a list to what you have done, what development we have contacted. For amount of trees we cut down here, it's only a memo that you can say, I talked to so-and-so. You know, give us an update, I mean, before you go out of conference, I'm sorry, I just can't support it.
Wesley, Alderman Wesley, everything you said makes good sense, and I'm in agreement with you, and that's why I didn't wanna make it a discussion tonight. I thought they should have ample time, they're talking about the budget for next year, and I thought we could postpone this at midnight, we could postpone this to another time when they can come back and show the cause for their, uh, desire to go to the national, what they can write down that they can expect to bring back. I think it's too early in the game to, to start playing like the ninth inning. Alderman Coles?
When they're ready to go, I'll carry your bags, and I'll bring them.
I do think it would be appropriate for the oldest and wisest member of the council to go with you. Alderman Winger?
I'd like to see them go to this conference. Um, the, the amount of money we spend, we're gonna get back in development, in, in community enhancements. Um, sure, we could've done more in the past, and sure, we could've contacted more developers, I imagine. But at the same time, we found any avenue now, and let's go with it. For, for the amount of time the staff spends in that concrete set of timeframe, the amount of days, you know, it's like a finite set of days, you can get a lot done in those days. There's this, uh, there's a price tag, but I say, let's, let's get it done. So, I'd like to see at least our, our two staff people go. Thank you.
Alderman Winger, thank you. Uh, again, I can be in agreement with you two, and I can be in agreement with Alderman Wesley, but I do think that it's too early to make a vote or a decision on this. I do think that they should come back with concrete documentation on why they can, why they should go, and who they've talked to. And again, to avoid the conversation tonight, that's why I wanted to, to table it for a future meeting, uh, though the... Though there were more hands up, and I have to recognize everybody to be fair. Alderman Caddala?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, with all due respect to the method that you're going for here, and I do appreciate that, as long as we're into the discussion, I would like to remind council how much money we're talking about here, first of all.
Well, first off, I mean, I've got no problem coming back with more information at the next meeting, but we already, it's a relatively small amount of money, which is already in the budget for this year. It would total $1,400 a person with hotel, airfare, and registration for the conference.
Alderman Caddala?
As a follow-up to that, you know, I would, I would support they go, I'm sorry, did you-
Good, in high likelihood, we can actually probably get the downtown development grant to pay for 80% of the cost, too, although it's already low with $1,400 per person.
I like that idea. Free money wherever possible. But I, I mean, I would support you going. I would ask that you not only come back with, with whatever literature, whatever information you learned, but, but some action points, and maybe even, maybe even a schedule of, of when, and, you know, you plan to be able to do these things and, you know, the photo, I think photographs of, of the area, identify all potential sites that are not used to their greatest and highest potential. There's a lot of things that I remember from, from sitting in the seminar that have to be done. So I would like to see your action plan on how that's going to, how that's going to happen. But furthermore, considering time is of the essence with, with everything we do, I would really like to see a motion tonight, because I think this is something that we should do for a small amount of money. It's got a lot of potential profit.
Alderman Nuncio Police?
I'm in favor for the conference, number one, but I think if you guys are going to go, we should have something in place like these other cities, get something set up. I mean, we can highlight our new train station, B4 zoning, and whatever else we have in the works.
Can I say something?
Wait, Alderman, Ed?
Alderman Ed. Yeah, you know, Decatur and Peoria and Pioneer, although I may be a little more palatable. I hope you're not clouded by Las Vegas being the site of the convention, but I think I have enough trust and faith in these two gentlemen representing our city that they would do a good job for us, and the money will be well spent. We just spent a lot of money at the IML convention, and I think we could extend that courtesy and that to these gentlemen. I have faith in our staff.
I agree with you, Alderman. Can I, I just, I think the issue is whether we're, we'd be voting tonight prematurely without them having prepared a written document about it. And I agree with Alderman Police, that, that like everything else that's proposed for money, there's a written document. And I'm not saying I'm against them, because I'm not. I think they should go. I think that we should follow the procedure, that they should have a written document saying what they hope to accomplish. And, and as we went along, they discovered that there was money available from a grant. So let's get that all in writing, and, and then we can have the vote.
I think we do already have the money in the budget.
But it's not a matter of whether we have it, it's a matter of somebody else will pay for it. There is a grant that he just mentioned that will pay 80% of it.
There's just times when you got to pay out of pocket. You know, we have these funds, we have the budget for these reasons, for these purposes, for these conventions, for these meetings. So it's there, it's in the budget, we could spend it.
Okay.
You know, we don't, you're not going to get a grant for everything we're going to do. And look for outside sources for everything, you know, you're just going to be chasing your tail around.
Okay, Alderman Caddala?
With and out of respect for our chairman, if, if we hold this vote off until you do present this material that Alderman Lewitin is waiting for, when is this conference? Is it going to hurt you if it's another two weeks before we make this final decision?
There is a cheaper advanced registration that would, we would miss the deadline for if we didn't bring it to council next Thursday. And we can have that written for, information next Thursday. If we wanted to take it, you know, vote tonight and then have information at council next Thursday, we could do that.
That's fair. Alderman Caddala?
With that, may I make a motion to table this discussion until next Thursday night's council meeting, at which point in time staff can-
Should we make a recommendation?
He's looking for a recommendation from committee. Is your proposal that we should give the recommendation and then vote on it at council?
Yes, yes.
There's a motion on the floor from Alderman-
Second.
That we approve of this, and that they will bring their presentation next week. Everybody in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion is carried unanimously. Last item is adjourned. Do I have a motion? Anybody opposed? This meeting is adjourned.